David Don. I don't know, because Zoom is up there.
Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. I'll call on Vice Chair Betty Jenkins to open us up. If you'll please stand for the pledge at the ward for a moment of silence.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe seated. Thank you. We're joined by Board members Deborah Napper, who is on FaceTime, and David Coats, who's on the phone. Anyway, they're both remotely with us. I see David on Lisa's phone there, so thank you. We'll begin tonight's meeting by recognizing our October Employee of the Month. Well, Jeremiah Coleman, please come to the podium. All right. Jeremiah Coleman knows what it is like to work with students that have support needs. Previously, a stay-at-home dad, Coleman helped raise his son and provide instruction at home. When it was time to re-enter their workforce, he started out as a custodian at Southeast High, but found his calling as an exceptional children's teaching assistant at Alamance Elementary. The impact he has had on the fifth-grade student he serves was quickly noticed by teachers in his grade level who nominated him to be Employee of the Month. "Mr. Coleman has come in with an open heart to give his all to what he does," writes Emily Brane, a fifth-grade teacher at Alamance Elementary. "Mr. Coleman works with a physically disabled student and has just started recently. The child he works with is so happy the past few days, and this is a great change. The way Mr. Coleman reacts with all our students is amazing. We are so glad he has joined our team. Our kiddos are lucky to have him, and we are lucky to have him." Jeremiah received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s, and during the month of October, your photo will be displayed at the district's central offices, at Alamance Elementary, and in the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Linda Welborn to read aloud the certificate honoring Jeremiah.
Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition, presented to Jeremiah Coleman, Alamance Elementary, for Employee of the Month for October 2025, signed by our Superintendent Whitney Oakley and our Chair Deana Hayes. And I just want to say, it takes a special heart to do this, so we appreciate you drastically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we would like to have a few words.
Okay. I'm a man of very few words, if you ask my wife. So I'll just keep it short and sweet. Plus, it's a school night, and he needs to do his homework, so. I just really want to thank GCS for giving me the opportunity to just share my kindness and hopefully be a little light in this world. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll never forget this honor.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. We would like to shake your hand. And we would like to invite all of your friends, family, and any of your coworkers that are here with you to come up as well. Unfortunately, due to personal reasons, our Volunteer of the Month for October is unable to be in attendance this evening, and we will postpone her recognition until our next meeting. But in the meantime, congratulations to Julie Amane on her nomination and selection, and thank you for your service at Guilford, Northern Guilford Elementary. We are now at public comments. We have nine speakers that have signed up. We would like to just remind our speakers and our audience that as your name is called and you approach the podium, please introduce yourself and give your name and whatever you would like to about your address. For those of you in the audience, if something is said that you support or agree with, we would like for you to demonstrate that by doing this, so that the speaker can continue uninterrupted. We do ask that you refrain from mentioning any student or staff name. If there's something that we can support or assist you with, we will have a staff person meet you outside of the room. When you begin your introduction, you will have three minutes to make your comments. When the amber light comes on, you will have 15 seconds left, and so we would like for you to wrap up your comments, so that the next speaker is able to begin. Our first speaker of the evening is Jenny Hunt, followed by Eddie Souther, or Souther? Welcome.
Good evening, Boyd. My name is Jenny Hunt, and I live at 718 Percy Street in Greensboro. Usually, when I come to see you, it's National Library Month, and I've got books for you. And I don't have books tonight. I'm sorry. I'll bring them another time. You'll be seeing more of me. But tonight, I'm here to share great news about GCS librarians and also to ask your support in fostering a culture of free and diverse reading among our students. Last week, the North Carolina School Library Media Association State Conference was held in Concord. Not only did the GCS school library media coordinators participate in force as learners, but seven of us led conference sessions. One of us, our colleague from Northern Middle School, also led a nationally viewed webinar for Fallet, our library software provider. And I thought you deserved to hear this good news because you have supported us very well in the past. Oh, sorry. You've supported us well in the past, and I think it's important to contribute to professional organizations, both as learners and as leaders. As we work to enrich our students' learning through reading, I respectfully ask that you adopt the resolution supported by the North Carolina Association of Educators, supporting a student's right to read by accessing a variety of materials from many different sources. This resolution sends the message that we value students regardless of their backgrounds, and we encourage them to find out about themselves and others through the rich experience of reading. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I look forward to giving you more good news as I speak to you in the months ahead. Good night.
Great. Thank you. Eddie Souther, or Souther? Souther?
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Eddie Souther. I'm a lifelong resident of Guilford County and Greensboro City. I went to Brightwood Elementary School, went to Madison Elementary School, went to Northeast Middle School, went to Page High School, then went and did my college career over at UNC Greensboro. I love this area. I have three beautiful kids. I have an eight-year-old, a four-year-old, and a two-year-old. And that's kind of what brings me in here, is being in Guilford County. I've seen the best of Guilford County schools. I've went to some really great places, went to, had some really great teachers, and I've also seen some of the worst of Guilford County schools. I also was deputy sheriff here, so did four years with the Guilford County Sheriff's Office. I know what these schools are experiencing right now. One of the things that I'm kind of upset about now is the fact that we have teachers being assaulted. We have this stuff being hidden from the public. Our teachers should not have to live under the threat of violence. They shouldn't be cursed at. They shouldn't be assaulted. It should be a zero-tolerance policy towards assaulting one of our employees here at Guilford County Schools. You assault a teacher, you don't deserve to go back to in-person class. And I know, having a grandmother that also worked at scale, there's places to have these kids help. And a lot of times, these kids are doing stuff to ask for help, and we're not giving them that. We give them a lot of lip service here at the school board, and we say, hey, we want to help these kids, but we're not helping them. When you give them a pat on the hand and say, it'll be okay, little Johnny, we have to get past that part. I'm calling on the school board. There are several Facebook pages. There are several Instagram pages of fights inside of Guilford County schools. Northeast Guilford High School, the school that I live beside of in McLeanville, North Carolina, has one dedicated to all the fights for the past three years. These videos are still online. These kids are doing this. It's got hundreds of likes on every single one of these videos. What are we doing to combat this? What are we doing to tell these students to stop recording this? What are we doing to tell these students to stop fighting? I'm not seeing a lot of it. Like I said, I have an eight-year-old in school. No kid deserves to be bullied. But one of the things that we should be doing is we should be caring for these students, and if somebody is attacking or bullying one of your kids, I would hope that, as a parent, as a school board member, you would help us take care of this problem. And it goes on, and it goes on, and it goes on, until something bad happens in one of our schools, and that's what I'm afraid is going to happen. We allow this to go on. We should have a zero-tolerance policy towards assaulting other students, towards assaulting staff. And I know that Guilford County Schools has a policy to where you don't talk about how many assaults are in the schools, but having worked inside of the sheriff's office, I know how many assaults are in these schools. I've also attended these schools. There's a lot that go to the principal's office, and there's nothing ever done about it. I'm just calling for some more transparency, work with these administrators, work with these students, and let's have safer schools.
Thank you. Jennifer Shaw, followed by Kathy Kruska. That's okay. Take your time. Welcome.
Thank you. And I'm sort of, short of breath. Good evening, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Guilford County School Board, our esteemed Superintendent, and your excellent staff members. My name is Jennifer Shaw. My address is 7928 Bayfield Lane, Greensboro. I've lived and worked in Guilford County for more than three decades as a physician, as a health equity researcher, and as an anti-racism trainer. My two adult children are graduates of Guilford County Schools. I am so delighted with the success of Guilford County Schools in supporting our children to recover the losses in achievement that were incurred during the pandemic. However, it is essential to note that the gaps in achievement between white students and students of color have remained the same for decades. This is the problem before us that we still have as a community. When such persistent disparities continue by race, it is essential then to address race as a factor. I've worked in the healthcare system and was a part of the ACURE grant, Accountability for Cancer Care Through Undoing Racism and Equity, that addressed systemic issues within two healthcare systems that contributed to racial disparities in breast and lung cancer care for black and white patients in two different communities. We were able to successfully close the gap in outcomes and reduce mortality by addressing the system itself and the ways it was treating people inequitably. Those changes made by addressing issues of race and racism in the system also resulted in improved outcomes for the white patients. That's an important point. It raised everybody's opportunities to be cured. Our healthcare system and our educational system are filled with kind, caring people who want the best outcomes for all of their clientele. However, every system wants to outsource responsibility for the disparities that they themselves create within their own structures. Guilford County Schools needs to examine those structures that are responsible for the persistent distressing disparities in achievement. It is not the problem of the children who enter the system or of the people who are teaching them, but of the system itself. We need to dig deeper to understand what is happening. As always, thank you for your service to our community. May you continue to strive to enhance and improve the opportunities for all children in Guilford County. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Kruska, followed by Sam Page. Welcome.
Good evening. It's wonderful to address you once again. You're probably starting to see me a lot, and I hope that's okay, because I think you do a great job. But I'm here today to actually talk about something a little bit difficult. And that is to recognize that although we can celebrate and be very excited about coming up from our pre-pandemic numbers and, you know, kudos to all the educators involved in making that happen. However, there is still a gap, and that gap is in the achievement gap. And that gap is between our white students and our students of color. And if you look historically, that gap has been worked on and worked on and worked on for years. In fact, I mean, one landmark event was what's known as the Coleman Report in 1966. Sixty years ago, the disparity between how white children and African-American and other people of color were performing was just sinful. So what I'm here to do is to talk to you about not placing blame. But I actually am here because I would like to strongly suggest that we need to put aside some of the strategies that have been done, because they're not working. And what we need to do is revisit anew a way to close the achievement gap. And to do that, by evaluating seriously all of the structural realities within the system that was created to really for advantaged students already, but not for our students of color. You know, I've often said to you that your job is really hard, and I know it, and I acknowledge it, and I appreciate you for what you do. And I really appreciate that you're looking at equity and inclusion and diversity. But I also am confident that you probably were not very pleased to look at that gap in our last report for the county. It's troubling. And I'm guessing that you are already considering some goals and plans to make a difference. That's the way you are, and that's why I applaud you so often. So then I propose making the achievement gap a priority way up there for year 2026 and beyond until the gap is closed. And to do that, by finding a group of individuals that will think differently about the root causes, as my predecessor talked about, related to race, will admit some of their inherent biases, will recognize dichotomies, and subsequently acknowledge many truths. In summary, I ask this group to explore every possible condition that caused disproportionate outcomes for students. Examine them, and when any are found for inequity, action is taken with metrics for remedy and change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sam Page, followed by Landon Carson. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sam Page. I am the sheriff from Arknap County. I have a prepared speech I'd like to read. This is in regards to state budgets and importance to school safety. School safety is a top priority for educators, parents, and policymakers. Ensuring a secure environment for students and staff requires thoughtful planning, resources, and ongoing support. One of the most significant factors influencing the effectiveness of school safety initiatives is the state budget. The state budget is outlined by government spending priorities and allocates funds to various sectors, including education. It serves as a financial blueprint that determines how much money will be available for public schools, including specific programs and initiatives related to safety and security. Adequate state funding is essential for maintaining and improving safety in schools. The budget directly impacts several areas crucial to school safety, such as school security, infrastructure improvements, preventive programs, emergency preparedness, implementation of advanced security technologies. Consistent and adequate funding from the state budget ensures that schools can implement long-term safety measures and adapt to emerging threats when budgets are cut or insufficient. Schools may be forced to, also, when that happens, to reduce security staff, postpone infrastructure upgrades, or eliminate prevention programs, leaving students and staff more vulnerable. On the other hand, well-funded school safety initiative can help prevent incidents, respond effectively to emergencies, and create a positive school climate where students feel safe to learn and thrive. The allocation and use of state funds in school safety require collaboration among state legislatures, local school districts, administrators, and community stakeholders. The state budget plays a pivotal role in shaping the safety of schools by prioritizing adequately funding school safety initiatives, and states can help protect students, educators, and communities, foster an environment of conducive to learning and growth. Policymakers and citizens alike must recognize the importance of the state budget in supporting school safety and advocate for sustained investment in these critical areas. Since 2008, this recorded in North Carolina, about 51 school shootings since 2008. I'm a former school resource officer, and I will always advocate for school resource officers in every one of our schools. It's necessary at this day and time. I would encourage each and every one of you here today to contact your representatives in the House and the Senate and encourage them to encourage the leadership in the House and Senate to support a state budget. We need to adopt a budget now for all of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Landon Carson, followed by Joanna Pendleton. Welcome.
Hello. I am Landon Carson from Guilford County. And I am here today because I fear for the LGBTQ within Guilford County school systems who have been abandoned by their state as North Carolina adapts hateful policies that ban queer literature, targets trans girls in sports, and limits teaching of LGBTQ history. I stand before you today as Landon Carson, a fully out 29-year-old transgender man. But on December 17, 1995, I was born Michelle Kiara Carson and assigned female at birth. It's difficult for me to express the shame and loneliness I experienced as a child within the NC public school systems because I lacked the vocabulary to share my experience with the world around me. I struggled with depression, anxiety, and body image issues because I did not have the words to describe what I would thankfully later learn to be gender dysphoria. I was drawn to masculine things as early as I can remember, which means I struggled to connect with girls my age and was ostracized by boys throughout my life because I was perceived as a girl. What people didn't know was that my hair and my clothes often caused me massive distress that I just simply could not explain. So I isolated myself and withdrew into books and video games because fictional worlds were a lot easier to face than the reality I was living. I had very few friends, and I was considered a weird tomboy by most of my peers. At one point in middle school, I briefly tried to change my name to Matt and insisted that I be allowed to play sports with the boys during gym class. This was about 2007. I did not fully understand exactly what I was advocating for, but I have come to realize that Matt was my true self, fighting to be acknowledged before I even had an understanding of any identity that existed outside of the gender binary. Unfortunately, Matt was quickly dehumanized by the adults in my life who accused me of being insincere and making things up for attention. I wouldn't come out as Landon for another 12 years, in which I struggled with addiction, suicide, self-harm, and PTSD due to the lack of support from my parents and educators throughout my life. I think of 13-year-old Matt often and wonder how much suffering and isolation I could have avoided had I been taken seriously and allowed to explore my identity freely without ridicule or judgment. The federal government will continue to enact laws that are meant to systemically cause our children harm for decades to come, but we must not waver. Even as laws change, we can continue to work together to create a brighter future for our young people, but we must not comply in advance. We cannot preemptively give up our autonomy. We must stand as beacons in opposition to our oppressors, so our children see that they are not alone. For National Coming Out Day, I wanted to share my story with the board because I believe it is my duty to advocate for LGBTQ children of Guilford County until my existence is outlawed entirely. It is vital that we continue to lead with love and equality, not promote corporal punishments or zero-tolerance policies. I want to see every single one of our children graduate, not end up in jail cells or graveyards. And if you believe this, you will not abandon them. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanna Pendleton, followed by April Parker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joanna Pendleton. I live at 4,003 Coltswood Drive in Greensboro. And I am here tonight as the president of our Guilford County Association of Educators, which is our public school workers' union. I wanted to share with you some information tonight about our fall campaign that we are running with workers in Guilford County Schools who are members of GCAE and who are just aligned with us. We are currently running a petition for workers to sign, and these workers are making some demands. And so we wanted to go ahead and share these demands with you this evening. And I have a copy for you, so that you can read over those, and we'll be happy to have more conversations with you in the coming weeks. We will be back on November 18 with a whole bunch of us in red shirts and a great big petition delivery and hopefully celebration as well. So I wanted to go over those demands with you briefly. And some of these dovetail nicely with some of the other speakers that we've heard this evening. So we have three. Number one is to prioritize worker pay in the reconciliation budget. We know that last spring, GCAE and our allies fought for and won $3 million designated for classified staff wages. And we want you to use at least that $3 million towards classified pay raises that prioritize all of our lowest-paid classified workers. And to use the low wealth supplement dollars to raise teacher pay with a specific focus on veteran teacher pay in years 15 to 25, where our state pay scale flatlines during those years. Number two, protect the rights of workers and students in our schools. And there are two things under this one. Number one is to adopt a resolution protecting workers, students, and families against illegal searches and seizures. And the second part of that is to adopt a resolution supporting students' right to read by accessing a variety of materials from a variety of sources. We can have those draft resolutions ready for your review as well. And number three is stand up to cuts to our public education system. We'd like you to adopt a resolution calling on state and federal elected government officials to fully fund public education and to protect public education from proposed cuts. And join public school workers and families in meeting with the Guilford delegation of state and federal legislators to advocate for public school funding. So again, we will be back at the next board meeting. We look forward to having conversations with you between now and then. And we look forward to standing with you, and we look forward to having you stand up with us as well for our public schools that we all love. Thank you very much.
Thank you. April Parker, followed by our final speaker, Philip Marsh.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is April Parker. I'm the candidate for City Council District III, endorsed by and offering a statement on behalf of the LGBTQ Democrats of North Carolina. Today, we greet you for the annual acknowledgement of National Coming Out Day. We come out to the board every year. Thank you for your continued leadership in creating schools where every student, including our LGBTQ students, can learn and grow. Across Guilford County and our LGBTQ community, we are seeing the beginnings of something powerful. Parents, educators, and community members standing together to ensure every child feels safe and supported. A true coalition for inclusion is taking shape, one rooted in care, courage, and community. That unity is more important now than ever. Statewide measures like Senate Bill 49, House Bill 808, House Bill 805 have made it harder for educators to do their jobs and for students to be theirselves. These laws create fear and confusion where there should be trust and belonging. But here in Guilford County, we know better. When students are affirmed and represented in their schools, they thrive. When educators are equipped to lead with information, tools, compassion, and our support, every child benefits. That's why we invite this board and the public to continue building that coalition. And we ask that you join us at Ruston's Reunion 2025 Annual Committee Convening on November 15 at UNCD's Greensboro Elliott Center from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This gathering will bring together parents, educators, students, and allies committed to creating schools where every child feels safe, valued, and seen. Together, we can strengthen the partnerships between our city Together, we can strengthen the partnerships between our city, our schools, and our communities. Can't wait to work better together. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Philip Marsh. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Philip Marsh. I live at 211 East Lewis Street, Greensboro, North Carolina. I'm here today to speak about a matter that I have reached out to some of you individually about. That was in regards to, I submitted an application for a position at, I think it's Parkview Elementary, and was ultimately told by the principal that I was recommended for hire. Ultimately, that recommendation was forwarded to the HR department, and with HR, for some reason, that application and recommendation was not processed. I did some research based on some of the feedback that I got, which was very minimal from staff, and was very concerned about what additionally revealed. I did reach out to the licensure board with the state. They told me that procedure was not followed. Also looked at the policy of Guilford County schools, also saw that procedure was not followed. And then additionally, what I have come to learn is that staff is arbitrarily making decisions that they are not supposed to make. They are taking due process outside of the licensure board, and that is not in accordance with the law of North Carolina as well as federal law. And so I wanted to, A, bring this to your attention, and then for a very brief moment, I was speaking with Ms. Allison Yates. She also stopped responding to emails. And, you know, again, when we speak about professionalism to these students that are in school, learning to go on to their path of being a professional, some of these things really rubbed me the wrong way as a black man. And then when we hear the advocacy of black men to come back and teach in these schools, and then I saw the process of how I was treated, yeah, it was just very, very concerning. And so I wanted to bring, A, this, bring this to the attention of the board, and then, B, follow up on what are the next steps of resolution for this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public speaking. We are now at approval of the agenda. There is an addition to the agenda, a resolution on Laughlin that is added under action items. Is there a motion?
So both.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Debra or David Hep.
Madam Chair, the addition resolution is a nay for me.
Right, right. Well, thank you. We'll get to that.
We're voting aye on the agenda.
He said what?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So the consent, is Debra on?
Yeah, but Zoom is up there.
Okay, so she's Zooming. They've got her. Okay, we get the thumbs up. So that passes by a vote of eight to one.
No, she just...
Yeah, Diane voted no on the resolution, on everything except the resolution. So everything except the resolution is unanimous, and then the resolution is eight to one. The resolution on Laughlin that we'll read...
Okay, I thought we were amending the agenda.
We added that to the agenda.
So the vote was on the approval of the agenda. Did I miss something?
Yeah, it was. Diane's just voting no on the addition of that. I hear what you're saying.
So...
Yeah, I had added that to the agenda.
And so I apologize if I'm mistaken, but I thought that vote was on the agenda as amended.
Yes.
And so it was...
Diane votes no on amending the agenda.
Still none.
Right.
Thank you for that. I'm sorry.
You're welcome. No problem. That was my fault. We are now at the consent agenda. Dr. Oakley.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items: Approval of September 9th, 25 regular meeting; and September 15th, 25 special meeting minutes; Personnel Action Report; Project Ordinance Revisions for Construction of New and Replacement Schools; Project Ordinance Transfer for Deferred Capital Replacement Projects; Authorization to Negotiate a Design-Build Contract for Renovations at Southeast Guilford High School for the Signature Career Academy of Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering Project; Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment II with Vinoy McFarland, a joint venture for the Allen J Elementary School Rebuild Project; Guaranteed Price Amendment I with Barr &amp; Bar &amp; Horace for Abatement, Demolition, and General Trades for the Irwin Montessori School Project; Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment II with T.A. Loving, Walter B. Davis, a joint venture for the Sternberger Elementary School Rebuild Project; Contractual Agreement with WC Construction Company, LLC for the Northeast Guilford High School Athletic Improvements Project; Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment I with McFarland Construction for the Stokesdale Elementary Gymnasium Renovation Project; Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning or HVAC Maintenance Service Contracts; and the Resolution Approving an Interlocal Agreement with the City of High Point for Student Transportation. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Thank you, and I did not receive any requests or questions about anything on the consent agenda.
I'm sure we'll pull F.
What's that?
Pull F.
Okay, we're now getting those. Okay, pull F. She, Diane asked to pull item F. Is that the same one you wanted, Linda?
No.
Okay. All right, so on items A through E and G through, G through L. Kim?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Pastor Sharaus?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Debra? Yes. Deana, yes. Okay, that passes unanimously. Diane, item F?
Well, my question is not so much about item F as it is about the guaranteed maximum price, and just wanting to know how much trouble or concern is having that in here now causing us? Because I see there's at least four or five items on this agenda for that. I mean, because I know when I asked you at the meeting in High Point, there were some concerns about, I mean, not that we can do anything about it, but I just want the public to be aware of that, if it is causing us problems, or if we just kind of roll with the punches.
I can try, and then Dr. Monk can fill in. I mean, I think this is how the county has requested that we move projects forward. So we're going to touch each project multiple times in each phase of construction, so it will go pending our board approval to the Board of County Commissioners for approval, and that will happen throughout each project. So we will, you will be seeing one, two, three phases. So it is being reviewed by both boards because of this format that the county has requested to receive rather than a whole project budget.
Okay, Madam Superintendent, if I can ask, is this slowing up our process?
We've only had one instance so far where progress has been slow. This should keep us back on track, assuming these items are approved tonight and go on the November County Commissioner's Agenda.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Thank you. Kim?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
How do you vote on that item?
Yes.
Yes.
Debra, yes. And Deana, yes. So that passes unanimously. We are now at, yes. Okay.
I want to recognize our southeast administration that's sitting out here because they're excited about the southeast advanced manufacturing that has finally come into fruition. So we appreciate you being here.
Thank you. So good evening again and welcome. Guilford County Schools is proud to have 17 national merit semifinalists from six high schools across the district. These 17 students in the class of 2026 will compete for a share of $26 million in scholarships from colleges, businesses, and the National Merit Cooperation. They qualified based on the PSAT exam they took during their junior year, and they represent less than 1% of high school seniors nationwide. October is a great time to apply to college. College Application Week is October 20th through the 27th, and many colleges and universities will waive their application fee that week, so please make sure you remember that. October 20th through the 27th, many colleges and universities will waive their application fees that week. Better still, some North Carolina schools are now offering direct admission through the North Carolina College Connect, so students don't have to apply at all. So learn more about these opportunities at cfnc.org. Shift Ed and the Guilford Family Academy want to help families learn about how to pay for college as well. They are sponsoring two virtual sessions on Thursday, October 16th to provide an overview of the FAFSA process. Go to shifted.org/events or gcsnc.com/familyacademy to learn more and register. We'd like to say congratulations to Christian Walter, Principal at Sylvia Mendez Newcomers School, who was selected to serve on the Governor's Advisory Committee for Hispanic and Latino Affairs. The council will meet quarterly to discuss and determine how to best advance contributions, expand opportunities, and reduce barriers for the Latino community, and make policy recommendations to the governor. The Guilford County Community Engagement Team in partnership with Junior Achievement hosted its first-ever Hispanic Career Speakers Series at Allen Middle School in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. The event featured professionals from a range of fields including law and public safety, entrepreneurship management, financial services, health and human services, and advanced manufacturing. Thank you, and this concludes my remarks. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening, and congratulations to the educators who were recognized at our annual Celebration of Excellence just last month. Winners were honored in nine categories, and they were Wanareli from Guilford Elementary, teacher; Principal Daryl Harris from Eastern High; Assistant Principal Emily Stevenson from Eastern High; Rookie Teacher Madison Magyar from Summerfield Elementary; Mentor Erica Covington from Southern High; Social Worker Vanessa Jarman from Bessemer Elementary; School Psychologist Allison Lesh, who serves multiple schools; School Counselor Susan Ladka from Ragsdale High; and School Library and Media Coordinator Chelsea Huskins from Sylvia Mendez Newcomers School. The GCS Choice Showcase will return to the Coliseum on Wednesday, October 22nd from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. There, families may explore more than 60 choice schools and programs that provide specialized environments to nurture a child's talents and equip them to thrive. Learn more about these programs and how to apply at gcsnc.com/choice. The application window opens October 15th and will remain open until November 28th. Tuesday tours will take place October 28th, November 4th, and November 18th to help you make your decision. On Thursday, October 16th, State Superintendent Mo Green will be at Eastern High to share more information about the state's new strategic plan. He will get an assist from our Principal of the Year, Daryl Harris, who will explain how the state's plan relates to the work we're doing right here in Guilford County. This event begins at 6:00 PM, and all are welcome to join. Finally, October is National Principals Month, and I want to celebrate the great work that our school leaders are doing to support students and families and staff. We know that being a principal is a 24-hour-a-day job, and their leadership is critical to the successes that we're seeing across the district. Please thank our school principals and assistant principals for the way that they make GCS a world-class district. We'll now ask Dr. Monk to come up to share our annual sustainability reports, as that's the conclusion of my remarks.
Thank you, and we have two reports under reports tonight, and that's the annual sustainability report, and then next is the signature career academies of advanced manufacturing and engineering. Thank you, Dr. Monk.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley and Chair Hayes. Good evening, board. It's my pleasure to present our annual sustainability report tonight. Board Policy 6530 Energy and Resource Conservation sets the following objectives for sustainability and conservation in Guilford County schools. First, integrate the concept of resource conservation, including waste reduction and recycling; reducing the consumption of energy and consumable materials whenever possible; decrease waste through recycling, composting, and fully utilizing all materials to the extent possible; maximizing the use of biodegradable and recycled products; low emission and zero emission vehicles; and renewable energy sources such as solar power; design new construction projects to standard set for the leadership in energy and environmental design, also known as LEED certification at a minimal; and include sustainability measures and targets in planning for all construction projects, which may include sustainable site development, water savings, energy efficiency, material selection, waste reduction, and indoor air quality. North Carolina's K-12 Resource Conservation Standards are embedded within the state's K-12 Science Standards and Environmental Literacy Plan, which aims to help students understand the importance of conserving natural resources and how our everyday actions can make a difference in protecting our environment. Our students are learning how to take care of the earth and use its resources wisely through lessons to help them understand how people and nature should work together. Our sustainability work extends beyond the classroom through our community partners. North Carolina Green Power's Clean Energy Education Program supports our teachers, bringing engaging, hands-on curriculum to our classroom. Guilford County Environmental Education Programs include resource conservation workshops, annual education contests for grades 3 through 12, conservation field days in mobile soils classroom, careers and conservation scholarships, and custom classroom lessons for all grade levels. Programs like our very own Energy Watch, which has been operated since 2010, empower schools to monitor and reduce energy use, turning conservation into both a teaching tool and a cost-saving measure for our district. Now let's turn our attention to our energy consumption. EnergyStar.gov recommends energy use intensity for measuring energy consumption. Included on this slide are energy consumption comparisons for electricity, gas, and water for fiscal years '24 and '25. Both electricity and gas have been normalized for weather differences between those two fiscal years. Electricity use is measured in kilowatt-hours. To determine our energy use intensity, we divide our total kilowatt-hours by the total square footage of our building. This shows a 2.75% increase between fiscal years '24 and '25. Natural gas is measured in thermes per square foot, with one therm equivalent 100,000 BTUs. Our data shows a 3.63% increase in natural gas consumption. Finally, our water, we calculate using total gallons divided by total square footage. This year shows a decrease of 19.11% in water use intensities. This is mostly attributable to moving into the new Faust, Peck, and Brooks Global Facilities mid-year and leaving the former schools unoccupied. However, the square footage of the former school locations remain a part of the calculation, thereby reducing the use intensity. Also of note, we have 10 schools, and now that's gone down to nine with Sumner being transitioned to municipal water that are on wells and are not metered the same as our municipal water sources. We do not have data yet to determine what energy savings are going to be gained by the implementation of our LEED design for our new construction projects, but as we begin closing and consolidating older buildings in the coming years, we do anticipate seeing reductions in the overall energy consumption. Still, for us to realize those savings, we need to make sure that we're not relying solely on one-time capital investments. This is going to require sustained funding through maintenance and operations as well. This part of our sustainability work focuses on how we can reduce waste through smarter systems and everyday practices in our schools. Our school nutrition team is implementing several initiatives to reduce waste. They are recycling cardboard packaging from bulk purchases, utilizing shared tables so students can return unopened food items, decreasing the amount of prepackaged food we use through the direct trade service, which empowers students to choose items from the menu that they will actually eat, helping to reduce waste. We also use individual utensil dispensers to eliminate waste for prepackaged utensil sets, and whenever possible, we purchase locally to provide fresh produce while lowering transportation emissions. Lastly, we're beginning to explore how we can re-implement our district-wide composting programs at all of our schools. Our sustainability efforts don't end in the cafeteria. They extend to how we manage and measure all waste throughout the district. Since our collective for the city of Greensboro is calculated by the number of dumpster pickups per week, which is two dumpster pickups and one recycle, and not tons, we are reporting the number of eight-yard dumpsters we are currently operating at our sites as either trash or recycling receptacles. Our goal is to increase the amount of recycling that we're able to ship out each day and reduce the amount that are being deemed contaminated because maybe some trash gets thrown into the recycling. That's going to have to come through continuing to educate our sites about the proper disposal of trash and recycling. We're making progress toward a cleaner, more efficient transportation system for our students and communities. We currently operate one electric bus and anticipate receiving 14 other electric buses through the EPA's Clean Bus Program. We're making progress toward a cleaner, more efficient transportation system for our students and communities. We currently operate one electric bus and anticipate receiving 14 other electric buses through the EPA's Clean Bus Program. There are another 21 electric buses that we could possibly receive, but they're on hold. Earlier this year, we received a Clean Bus Planning Award valued at $70,000 in technical assistance from the U.S. Joint Office of Energy and Transportation and the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. This work positions us to reduce emissions, improve air quality, and build a foundation for a cleaner, more sustainable fleet in the years ahead. Again, like our building programs, electrical vehicles have a higher initial purchase cost than petroleum vehicles and require additional training for maintenance. In order for this program to be successful, we will also need sustainable funding. Finally, we have incorporated a number of LEED elements into our new school design and construction, with all of our new construction projects having the ability to be qualified as LEED certified at a minimum. These elements include rainwater management, light pollution reduction, advanced energy metering, high-performance HVAC systems, building commissioning, daylighting, LED light fixtures, bike racks, solar panels, and solar-ready infrastructure, just to name a few. Our designs currently follow the LEED version 4 Building System rating. As we look ahead, our focus is on continuing to encourage and build sustainability across every part of our district, from classrooms to construction sites. We'll continue promoting sustainability practices with both students and staff through programs like EnergyWise, which helps schools monitor and reduce energy use while engaging students in hands-on conservation efforts. It is critical that we strengthen our energy monitoring and reduction initiatives, using data collection and evaluation to drive smarter decisions about consumption and efficiencies. We'll explore reviving our composting programs, as well as building on the recycling and waste reduction efforts already in place to divert even more materials away from landfills. As funding allows, we'll continue purchasing low-emission vehicles and expanding our transition toward a cleaner, more efficient fleet. And finally, we'll continue incorporating LEED design standards into all new construction, ensuring our facilities reflect the same commitment to sustainability that teaching our students do every day. Together, these steps move us closer to more efficient and more sustainable future in Guilford County schools. And with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Diane, and then Kim.
Okay, on page four, my questions are, are we using the city of Greensboro and the city of High Point's recycling education program? I know that they have expressed interest in the past in working with us. Are we trying to work with them and their programs?
Yeah, I have to look in that specifically. These are the partners that are definitely working within the curriculum of the North Carolina standards that I mentioned before. But I'll be sure to follow up and make sure that you get that.
Okay, because I know that Greensboro, well, I've seen the education program from High Point, too, because they've come out to some of the functions that some of our schools have had. And the joke is that you would have a school ask them to come out, but yet they didn't have provisions for recycling at the event. So we've got to understand that the two things go together. And help our schools know that, particularly when they have events, not just in the cafeteria, that either they or us need to help them do the recycling that needs to be done. Okay? My other question is, the Cooperative Extension also has a training program on composting, which I think that, again, if we can get our schools to invite them to come, I think they'll be more than eager. And it would be fun, I mean, just like whenever they bring the little eggs for incubators and chickens pop out. So I think these are resources that are out there that we could already make available to ourselves, okay? All right, my next one is, do we calculate the waste or use because of disrepair?
Yes, so...
Do you understand my question?
I do, and it's definitely all up in there, which is why I said, as we begin to do some of these new rebuilds, as well as what we're replacing with the deferred capital, we should see some of these, across all of these utilities, go down.
But you would, there is waste or extra use because of disrepair, whether it's heating or cooling, right?
That's correct, and I want to add, thank you for giving me this opportunity to say it again.
Sure, say it.
It's great to have these initial capital investments to address these, but if we don't maintain them, they become less and less efficient every year.
Okay, and then will we look at solar? And if I'm putting you on the spot by asking that, but if you're talking about energy, I mean, renewable energy potentially can be a saver, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so we currently have, under the new bond, Brooks Global has received its solar panels on its roof. All of the other designs are designed to be solar-ready. We are working to try to get credits so that we can not only have them solar-ready, but buy and book and install those solar panels on our roofs as well.
Okay, and will there be a way for you to monitor what that impact is?
Yes.
Okay, and that should, I mean, I have solar panels, and I finally got a bill where my bill from Duke Power was like $17, and I was like, you know, I started calling and saying, you know, that's an error, but I was like, no, it's okay, you know, because obviously the solar is working. But I'm just saying, you know, I know that it can work. Okay, then on page eight. At least for the city, I've heard that they have had funding cuts from the federal government supporting their e-buses. Are we going to face the same kind of thing, though? Because that's an expensive investment to wind up having to let sit because we don't have what initially got us in there, if you understand what I'm asking.
Yes, and thank you again for allowing me to say, these buses that I'm referring to were a part of a grant from the federal government. The 21 are also a part of a grant from the federal government, but they have said that they may not honor that grant. And so we would not have funding to purchase or replace electric buses without this type of grant source. It's a little over three times the cost for an electric bus than it is for a traditional diesel or propane bus.
Okay, so what would our option be to make a decision to stay with fuel-running buses? Or, I mean, what is our option? Give that electric bus back to them and tell them where the sun shines?
No, so we'll still run the ones that we receive. We do have charging stations for that. We have one that was a part of the grant. But we wouldn't, when it was time to replace a bus or purchase a new bus, we wouldn't likely purchase an electric bus because we just don't have the funding to do that locally. We would need to get the funding from the state that we normally receive.
Okay, and maybe this is a question you can ask, but in the time we've had that bus or buses, how efficient, I mean, is it worth the trouble we've gone to? I mean, I understand the environmentalists are going to jump all over me, but, I mean, just from a cost standpoint.
Yeah, so we haven't even ran it a whole year yet. We only have one. We haven't got the other 14. So that's, you know, that's hard to quantify. But we do know that diesel and propane buses have a lot of moving parts in the engine, which require a lot more maintenance than electrical buses. You mentioned it yourself as relates to air quality, the benefits of having electric buses. So I would say for us, we haven't used this electric bus enough to be able to quantify if it's worth investing the additional funds that we would have to come up with, as opposed to taking the funding that the state gives us to purchase buses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you for those questions. Those were some of my questions. But I wanted to know whether or not this initiative aligns with Guilford County at all, as a whole.
Well, I was at their meeting the other day, and I know that the same organization that has lobbied the city of Greensboro, as well as our Board of Education to adopt these, was urging them to adopt them. So I don't think that it's adopted by the county yet.
Right, okay, thank you.
Chrissy?
Thank you so much. Just to piggyback on one of the questions asked previously, the one electric bus that we do have, do we have the infrastructure in place for maintenance for that bus, for repairs, if something happens to it?
Yeah, we've got a bus garage. We've got guys to fix it, so yes.
Okay, and we have people who are able to, I know these were some of the discussions that we were having upfront about the buses, where did we have the infrastructure and the charging stations, and then people to do the maintenance? So I just wanted to see where we were with that.
Right, yes, and our focus were to keep training on the maintenance, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, and I just have one, just a conversation I was having with Dr. Oakley. I know that sustainability and climate and environmental responsibility is really a culture shift because the disposable things are in bulk and cheap. And so, and then you get, you know, just accustomed to using them. So I was asking her, because I've switched to plant-based cups and plates at my house. And again, it's a culture shift, but I was asking her if we had done something like that, and I thought it was really interesting for her to share what she was telling me.
And I only know because I've seen it in some of the new schools, where they are back to the reusable trays, right? But then also have the individual utensil dispensers, where you push and you get one fork, instead of the fork and the spoon and the plastic and the straw when you're only using the fork. I don't think USDA and what we're allowed to choose from federally is at the plant-based cup phase or the recyclable, like the straws, the paper straws. But I'm hopeful that, as people learn, but I do think that's progress, that we're not having so much waste every time someone eats one utensil.
Yeah, I remember when we used to do senior projects, and one of the ones that I went to, they were just showing the, you know, the six-pack of beverages and the plastic containers would get around the necks of, you know, animals in the environment. That was just really sad, so, you know, those kind of things, that when you become aware of them, you try to be mindful about the impact that you're having. So I appreciate that, and hopefully we'll continue to make changes as we're able to. Oh, I'm sorry, Diane, and then Linda?
No, that's my question.
Okay, okay.
I think I heard you say that we are trying to have the food where it's more, not in packages, but, you know, instant edible. Is that, or something like that? Did you say that?
Yeah, not prepackaged and like serving on those trays that Dr. Oakley suggested, so that the students can also kind of pick, and we're not just giving them a bunch of stuff that's going to go in the trash.
This is probably not a question, okay, but have you seen, you know, one of the concerns, particularly, I remember when I used to sub, most of the time, kids would take one spoon out of whatever they were given and throw the rest away. Have we seen, by the way, we're trying to offer food to children now that they're eating more? Has anybody looked at that, or do we even care?
Yeah, well, I would say that our participation is up, and so that tells us that they're going through the line and getting the food. And I think that also the shared tables is a good example of, like, if I go through and I want to swap with somebody, they got juice and I like milk, and that kind of situation, I think that's also encouraging students to go to the cafeteria.
So you would say that you think that kids are eating more?
Yeah, and we're going to do a presentation to you all here soon from School Nutrition that'll talk about our increase in participation. I know that Wing Wednesdays, everybody loved those, so tomorrow, go to your local cafeteria.
Are you going to bring us samples? Are you going to bring us samples?
No, you can go to the cafeteria and spend the time with those kids.
Yeah, I do. When I go visit, I go and I sit down, and I watch the kids. And I've seen them unfortunately take food and then decide, I'm not eating that. And I talk to them about it, and they're like, mm, I'm not interested. But I would like to have pizza on Wednesday instead of Friday every now and then.
We'll note that, too.
Betty?
Okay, my observance has been that the elementary and middle school are doing more of the eating. When they get to the high school, to me, they're not doing as much as the elementary and middle. But I know they are being encouraged to eat a balanced meal. And sometimes they get it and eat one thing off and toss the other, and some decide not to eat it. So I'm not sure what we can do, but I know when we brought that pizza in, they went crazy for a while and ate it, and it was chicken, you know? So I can say that Guilford County School is trying.
So is there a rule that you can't have pizza every day?
We'll include all of that in the school nutrition update.
All right, thank you. We are now at the Signature Career Academy of Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering.
Yes, and I'll invite Mr. Mattson and Dr. Miller, who are going to join for this update. You already considered one piece of this on the consent agenda with the capital project. But also last month, during our board work session, our team shared an overview of our district strategy to ensure that every student graduates with a clear plan for their post-secondary journey, which we're fondly calling the Guilford Guarantee, and this ties right into that. So as we think about what it takes to really prepare students for the job of tomorrow, we think about career and technical education, and we also think about how our Signature Career Academies play such a critical role in this. So tonight, you're going to hear more about the Signature Career Academy of Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering, and we're going to make some recommendations about the choice and the transportation boundaries for the programs at Smith High and Southeast High Schools. We are grateful to have the administrative team here from Southeast, who have been working for months and months and months on this project. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Mattson and Dr. Miller to share a few more details.
Thank you, Dr. Oakley and members of the board. It's easy to see that aviation and aerospace and advanced manufacturing are the economic future of Guilford County, and Jet Zero is the most recent example. The success of Jet Zero and Toyota Battery and Boom Supersonic and Honda Aircraft and HEICO and Marshall Air and on really depend on an education pipeline that provides highly skilled workforce who thinks critically, they know how to work in teams, and they're adept at problem-solving. We're excited about our partnership with Guilford Technical Community College and Honda Aircraft that's going to allow our students to take courses while they're still in high school in aircraft assembly, structures repair, composite technology in their junior and senior years, and graduate from high school and be ready to work at Honda, building the next generation of the Honda jet, the Echelon. This is one of several pathways that we're opening up for our students so that they can take advantage of these career opportunities in the growing aviation and advanced manufacturing industry right here in Guilford County. All of this work, from our Signature Career Academies to our partnerships with local industries, underscores a simple truth. Education and economic development are deeply connected. Guilford County Schools is not just preparing students for jobs. We're building the workforce that fuels our community's growth. And that's why it's important to remember that GCS is one of the largest employers and economic engines in our region. The future of our local workforce and our businesses begins in our classrooms. And we know that what happens in our schools directly impacts the strength and vitality of this community. The Guilford Guarantee braids together important, future-focused K-12 experiences for every Guilford County school student, from choice programs to industry credentials to tuition-free college credit. Our work aligns closely with My Future NC and the Governor's Council on Workforce and Apprenticeship Priorities, as well as the council's recently updated statewide goals. These goals are ambitious but essential to position North Carolina and our students for success in a rapidly changing workforce. Everything you see on this slide, from CTE pathways and pre-apprenticeships to service learning and tuition-free college credit, is designed to prepare students to lead in the workforce of tomorrow. Working with our industry and community partners, we create high-quality experiences for students that allow them to explore and experience the world of work while they're still in high school. As we talk about these exciting opportunities for students, it's important to pause and remember the promise that we're making to every Guilford County school student. The promise is this, that every student will graduate with more than a diploma, because graduation is just the beginning. We call the promise the Guilford Guarantee. It means that our students will leave us with a plan and real options for their future: college credits, career credentials, workplace experiences, and the confidence to take their next next steps on their path. Every student, not just a few, can graduate with at least a semester's worth of college credits, up to an associate's degree, or an industry-recognized credential, or a very meaningful workplace experience like an internship, apprenticeship, or a job shadowing experience. It's not about raising the bar for some, it's about raising the ceiling for everyone. College credits and industry-recognized credentials are tickets to economic mobility. One strategy to deliver on the Guilford Guarantee are our six Signature Career Academies. Please recall that in February 2019, the board approved the Signature Career Academies as new choice programs. These academies focus on pathways that emerged in response to the work of the Blue Ribbon Commission Workforce Study that identified high-demand, high-wage workforce needs in Guilford County and the triad. To help students explore their interests and aptitudes early, all of our seventh graders take a U-Science assessment in the fall. U-Science is a series of research-based brain games that help identify the natural aptitudes of our students. There are many career interest inventories available for, for young people to take, but students can only be interested in what they've been exposed to. They can't be interested in a career that they've never heard of. Moreover, we know that many of our students will enter careers that don't even exist yet. Because U-Science identifies natural aptitudes, students can learn about pathways and careers that fit their natural gifts. The work that began with the goals developed by the Community Industry Blue Ribbon Commission Task Force in 2018 Talent Alignment Strategy is shown here. That effort examined the Piedmont Triad's regions, changing industries, and led to realignment of CTE programs to better prepare students. We are focused on aligning programs from elementary to middle and through high school to make sure that students across our district have access to pathways that prepare them for their future right now. With the addition of the Signature Career Academy at Southeast, we will have these high-profile, high-impact opportunities available to students in each of our six school zones. The Smith Signature Career Academy of Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering was completed last year and empowers students with real-world skills and experiences in manufacturing and engineering that can lead to high-paying, in-demand careers in STEM and technical industries. A closer look at the, at the work at Smith High School helps us understand what we can offer students in the more rural areas around Southeast High School. In industry, people move around all day, doing things like troubleshooting with cross-departmental or na, or national and international teams, designing systems and building workflows using automation and robotics. The collaborative workspace is perfect for small group experiences where students learn in teams and work on innovation or problem solving. These are spaces that we also host families and industry partners. The learning spaces in our Signature Career Academies, like those at Smith and soon Southeast, are designed to mirror the high-tech, state-of-the-art manufacturing environments emerging in industries across our community. Our Signature Career Academy students earn industry-recognized credentials, giving them a competitive edge as candidates for advanced manufacturing careers and opening doors to high-demand, high-wage opportunities that are moving into our region at unprecedented rates. Classrooms that replicate real-world work environments also help students take ownership of their learning and take pride in their completed portfolios of work that they build throughout their experience. In these spaces, students perform complex tasks that mirror the challenges of advanced manufacturing. They become adept at assessing risks and considering innovative solutions to problems that they encounter working with advanced manufacturing equipment and processes, the same skills that employers value today. I'll now ask Dr. Miller to share our plans for the Signature Career Academy of Advanced Manufacturing at Southeast.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Our goal with the Signature Career Academy model is immersing students in state-of-the-industry learning spaces where they study the skills and technology that they will use in a career. Key components of the career-focused learning environment include classrooms that more closely resemble workspaces, collaborative spaces for team project meetings, and labs that introduce students to the equipment, procedures, and challenges associated with advanced manufacturing and engineering processes. The Southeast Signature Career Academy Upfit Project would not require extensive structural work. Project activities include ceilings and lighting, wall and floor finishes, restoration of existing terrazzo floors, new office configurations, new windows and some doors, new classroom technology and infrastructure, advanced manufacturing lab technology upgrades, HVAC, and roofing. We have worked to identify federal, state, and local funding streams to support the facility renovations needed for the Southeast Signature Career Academy, which the board approved in 2019. The investment will ensure that students in nearby rural communities have access to a learning environment that simulates high-tech manufacturing workplaces in our community. Supporting economic development in rural areas is central to the mission of the Golden Leaf Foundation and the project at Southeast directly aligns with that goal, serving students who live in some of the county's more rural attendance zones. Thanks to the support of our federal, state, and local partners and the generosity of organizations like Toyota, Golden Leaf, and the Bryan Foundation, we've secured more than $2.5 million to make this vision a reality. Now that we've covered how this work is being funded, let's turn to how it will take shape, specifically the choice and transportation boundary recommendations for the Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering Academies at Smith and Southeast. To help visualize what these proposed boundaries mean for our schools and families, we've developed this map. It shows the proposed feeder patterns for the Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering Academies at Smith and Southeast High Schools for the 2026-27 school year. The yellow shaded area would be the feeder for Smith and the pink shaded area would become the proposed feeder for Southeast, which includes many of our more rural communities. As Mr. Mattson mentioned earlier, results from the U-Science aptitude assessment are so valuable, not just for students, but for planning purposes also. They show that within the middle schools in the Southeast zone, there are more than 100 eighth graders whose natural aptitudes strongly align with this field of study. In summary, the proposed assignment changes include discontinuation of district-wide enrollment and transportation to the Smith, Smith High Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering Academy, introduction of the new Southeast High Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering Academy at the GCS Choice Showcase, which will be held on Wednesday, October 22nd, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the First Horizon Coliseum Special Event Center, and accepting applications for the Southeast High Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering Academy with anticipation of its opening in August 2026. Next steps include, our team will continue aligning academic programs for families to provide continuous and consistent pathways from grades K through 12. We would also integrate academic pathway programs into capital improvement projects so we are productive in the design and construction of appropriate learning environments for all students. And after this presentation tonight, staff will post the proposed choice and transportation boundaries for the Signature Career Academies at Smith and Southeast for public comment. Following a public comment period, choice and transportation boundaries will be brought back to the board for formal action at the regular meeting on November 18th. Students and families may explore their options at the GCS Choice Showcase on Wednesday, October 22nd, from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the First Horizon Coliseum Special Event Center. More than 60 innovative programs will be on display and we want to encourage our eighth grade students who come to be sure to bring their U-Science results to use as a helpful guide to explore the many high school options that fit their natural aptitudes and interests. The choice application window is open from tomorrow, October 15th, to November 28th, 2025. With that, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Diane, Chrissy, then Betty.
Do you mind explaining what is natural aptitude?
So a natural aptitude is a talent or a skill that you might have. One might be your ability to see things in three dimensions and visualize how something is supposed to look after you put all the pieces together? Or it might be your ability to look at a, some sort of text and find small details where that's not my aptitude, I just read the, for the big message. So, so one of those things is my aptitude. I can see how the pieces fit together and I can see the big picture. I can't, I am not your proofreader. That's just not my, that's not my aptitude.
Okay, so being able to build things with Legos?
Might be an example, yes.
Okay, I just want to, yeah, all right, thank you. The next question is, I think if, if you're not in one of these zones, can you still go to one of these programs if you provide your own transportation?
Would still be able to attend one of the programs, you'd just have to make application to the program and follow the choice process.
Okay, but, but like say I would want to go to Kearns Academy, but I live in Greensboro because you don't have the Kearns Academy at all.
Yeah, it, the analogy would be students who live in one part of the county are eligible to go to Weaver and if they live in a different part of the county, they're eligible to go to Penn Griffin or the elementary level Moorhead, VPA, and Parkview.
But those are all the same, whereas the, the Signature Academy at Kearns is, we don't have that.
We have two of those, Northeast is the other one.
Okay, all right then. So, so we do have options on both sides.
That's correct.
And, and again, if a student didn't live in that zone, if they, if the parent chose to, or they chose to apply and they were selected, they would be able to go as long as they provide their own transportation?
They, they would have to provide their own transportation in that regard.
Okay, but the question is, would they be able to go if they provide their own transportation?
Yes.
Okay, that's the question, thank you. All right, the next one is, is there room in our program to also encourage entrepreneurship? I understand that we want to help provide workers for what the community says, but there are men, or a number of, I would call them, impact businesses that wind up happening because of say a Toyota. So would we also, you know, I mean, it's one thing to say to this, to the kid, okay, learn how to be a worker bee, but supposing they don't want to be a worker bee? Do we also have room to encourage entrepreneurship?
We do not have a Signature Career Academy for entrepreneurship or business administration, but we do have pathways in our comprehensive high schools that allow kids to explore those skills.
Well, okay, I guess my suggestion is that if, if Toyota or whomever is going to invest the kind of money in us training their workers, that we also have a side conversation with them about entrepreneurship because that benefits them too. It, because, you know, if somebody decides they want to go into the restaurant business or, I remember when we were looking at something out, going out, I-40, there was a need for, I forgot what the business was, but there was a need for daycare, you know, 24 hours. So I, I'm just saying, can we also, you know, look at a broader picture? Because everybody doesn't want to work for somebody. You know, some of our folk might want to work for themselves. Why can't we encourage that too? Okay, and so is that a yes, no, maybe so?
Entrepreneurship's woven in all of them and there's pathways for entrepreneurship at every comprehensive high school. But I think in the industry conversations, we can absolutely make sure that that's a part of that pipeline.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then my last one is, are the, on page 13, are these improvements, I assume that you were talking about improvements for the program at, at Southeast, are we doing any improvements at Smith or is Smith needing improvements?
Smith's Signature Career Academy facilities opened in the fall of this year and students got to move into them for the very first time. They are brand spanking new.
I, I just want to make sure that, that, you know, Smith is missing something here.
They got to go first.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chrissy, then Betty.
Thank you so much for the presentation. My question is just about the page with the map on it. Obviously, there are many more feeder schools for Smith than for Southeast. And I just wanted to see, how many students can Southeast handle in this program and how many can Smith handle?
The Signature Career Academies are structured staffing-wise to take about 40 students per year from outside of the regular attendance zone. They're the same.
Gotcha. And how many, what, what does the, the pathway look like for the students? Like how many different classes are they doing as part of this program?
So in, in these Signature Career Academies, there's two pathways. One is focused on advanced manufacturing and the other one is focused on engineering. And so that's a series of about five courses that they take from their freshman to their senior, their junior year, which frees up their senior year to take classes at the community college or do an internship. And they, at the end of it, they earn four industry-recognized credentials.
Nice, okay, great, thank you so much.
Betty, then Linda.
Okay, Board Member Pratt took both of my questions, but I also want to acknowledge Mr. Fred Sellers here from Smith High School. I see that, again, that you have a lot of schools for Smith and a very few for Southeast. How did you do the boundaries for that in order to have four schools for Southeast and 11 for Smith?
So one of the aspects of one of our donors, the Golden Leaf Foundation, was to look for or create opportunities to create these kinds of spaces for advanced manufacturing and engineering in some of our more rural communities. And so the boundary that you see for Southeast encompasses many of our more rural communities and that is aligned with what Golden Leaf was expecting from us.
Okay, thank you. All right, Linda, then Kim.
Well, I did want to the pathways. I appreciate that. Oh, sorry. You know, I wanted to understand how the pathways worked. And then my second, the lead-up question of that is how are the middle schools being? Because if you come in in ninth grade and you have no strong math, especially if you're going in engineering and advanced manufacturing, that is a very technical kind of field, you know, taking AutoCAD, taking a lot of particular courses that could prep them. Now, I know middle school doesn't have that, but my question is, is where, how are we going to help them?
Yes, so there's three things that we have to do in middle school. One is we have to help students understand what these careers look like and that they exist. We have data that show that we have large numbers of kids who are, who have a strong aptitude for supply chain logistics, for example, and a very small number of those same kids have an interest in it because they don't know that it's an occupation. So that's one piece is just education about the opportunities. The other one is in our CTE programs at the middle school, they are built on the feeder high school. And if the feeder high school has an engineering program in it, there are engineering modules to help them get those sets of experiences while they're still in school. And then you're right, with our math curriculum, it's very important, math is, math and English are the two critical areas.
Okay. Then my other question is, and I got the aptitude, that you're identifying them in middle school for the aptitude?
So the aptitude work starts in seventh grade and then there's work in eighth grade around a career development plan where they go a little deeper into the pathways they want to take. But that aptitude assessment is given again in 10th grade when students are about to make decisions about their last two years of high school and which pathway to go through. And so those two points in time, just before I go to high school and then just before I get into the 11th grade when I can start taking college classes, are the right points in time for them to reexpose that.
The academies start in ninth grade.
That's right, so we're using their seventh grade assessment.
Three-year program, ninth, 10th, 11th, and then you open up the seniors so they can
Correct.
hopefully go get an internship and all that.
Correct.
So then we're, we're going to somehow backbuild in middle school to make sure that we are getting them where they need to be.
Elementary school.
Have we done any statistics on, I mean, all right, how many, how many of our Signature Career Academies? Have we done any statistics on, I mean, alright, how many, how many of our Signature Career Academies have been going on for numerous years? I know Kearns, well, but, they just got in on the building at Smith, so that one wouldn't count. So, that's, that's four, right, that are open? Western. Okay, so, my question is, is, you know, have we done any statistics about the ones that have been ongoing? About how many kids successfully complete the full program? How many kids drop out? And where do they aspire to after they get through it all? Do we ever do any follow-up on how good a job are we doing? You know what I mean? Because, you know, we need to know that to know how to improve what we're working on. So, and I don't know that I've ever seen that kind of data that says.
Because I think the first cohort just is the class of 25. So, we, we're at a place now to be able to-
Alright, so we're planning on doing that.
Provide a better analysis of what that looks like, that's right.
Turned it off, sorry. Sorry. We're struggling to get teachers. Now, we're looking for skilled teachers and highly competitive skills, you know. So, how are, how are we going to be able to make sure that we have staffed these academies with the best talent that we can staff them with?
It's, it's the ever-challenge in all of our public schools, not just our Signature Career Academies. If Fred were here, he would tell you the story about how his cert-, he's not up here though. But he would tell you, I could feel him, he would tell you that his Signature Career Academy leader was poached by Toyota.
Exactly.
That's right. But, but we have one that's running that place now that knows Toyota. And that relationship is stronger because of it, so.
Okay, so it just, it is a never-changing.
It's a never-ending circle.
Okay, and then, transportation, that's another, how are we, I mean, that, you know, that's a huge area on both sides. And we provide that transportation for those 40 students or, how many students are in the count, each academy?
Forty per grade level.
Forty, so that would be 120?
At full capacity.
At full capacity.
160.
No, because you said, well, does that last year count? Is it them being in there? Okay, if that last year counts in the internship, then you're correct. I was just giving it the three because they're going to do internships and stuff. How does that work? I mean, if you've got children at the very top and, well, especially Southeast because it's kind of like all the way down in the bottom.
I mean, it's part of this alignment of programs. It's part of why we have Northeast and Kearns. It's why we have Penn Griffin and Weaver, and we've got more work to do. So, this is actually going to increase our efficiency because we're not sending the whole county to Smith.
Okay.
But we have some, we have a ways to go. Because when we compared our other districts and other choice programs, and Ms. Erby talks about it, how it's different in North Carolina in terms of who gets to go where. We're gonna, I mean, the idea is that no matter what zone you're in, and remember zones are feeder patterns, that you have access to the same opportunities. And this is just another step in that alignment of programs. This is going to help us rather than hurt us. But we still have some transportation efficiencies to recognize. And the truth is that all students at Southeast should have access to this.
Correct.
That's what we have to figure out, not just 40 seats. How do we build the master's schedule and get the teaching position so that everyone who wants to can?
Yeah, because 40 is a very, actually very small. Well, it'll be 160 by the time you, you're fully.
But still small when you look at the size of the school and the district.
Right, yeah, I agree. Okay, well, I'm excited. I know that Southeast is excited. And I think we are going in the right direction in that skills and you don't need a college degree to make great money in doing certain skilled, specialized skilled that are highly sought after and pay very well. And you don't end up coming out with all the college debt. Now, not all. I have a lawyer. There's only one way to a lawyer, okay? And that is go on that path. But there's a lot of great opportunities and not every child is oriented to college. So, I'm excited about all of this. I think we're going in the right avenue in identifying children's aptitude and what they excel in. Because if, you know, we need to identify that and put them in the right place. Like, they always say in a work environment, finding the right person for the job is critical. And I think finding the right students that will excel and want to do this is a key factor in making sure that there's great success for everyone involved.
Thank you Linda. Did you want to say something, Dr. Oakley?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Kim?
Yeah, Dr. Oakley spoke about what my biggest concern was, that we're making these kind of investments and every student at one of these schools is not accessing these programs. And I'm just hoping that that is the goal. But by the time every child gets to access those things, the industry may change again. So, I just, you know, like, if they want these types of investments in education, I do think that the industries have definitely got to pull out of their pockets more in order for us to retrofit our schools to accommodate their need, right? Whether it's for workers or management and all of those things. So, I hope those are the kind of conversations that we're going to be having. But I do want to see the goal be that we don't have a need for maybe choice. That if Southeast is my school, then I get to pick and I have access automatically when I, because that's my school. And bringing in students even again, out of an attendant zone, is still troubling to me because I still want to see the students that live in that area get the priority to those programs. And, and how do we make sure that they are given that priority as opposed to students that are coming somewhere else? I know it's a work in progress, but 40 students for this kind of money? I just feel like we have to do a whole lot better. Because we, we expose so many students, right? There's a waiting list, right, for 40 seats. And it's just disheartening. Why go to the Choice Fair for 40 seats? So, I do think it's a good problem, but at the same time, access and making it more equitable for our students is hopefully where we're going to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim, Diane.
Are we gonna, are we going to, or are we monitoring the diversity of these programs? As far as what that would-
We always look at who applies. I mean, it's a lottery.
Okay.
And so, they're typically reflective of our student population just because of how the seats are awarded. But we do pay attention every choice window and follow the cohort.
Okay, does the GPA matter?
GPA is very important, we just talked about it.
The reason why I'm asking is, when you're saying that you've got to, you know, do some more lifting at the middle school level so that when this kid gets to the ninth grade, they're making decisions. But let's just say the kid in eighth grade has a very low GPA. Does that mean then that they can't participate? Or what does that mean?
It does not mean that they cannot participate. Middle schools don't submit GPAs.
Okay, but don't they have grades?
They have grades, yes.
So.
But grades are not an entrance criteria for a Signature Career Academy? That's your question.
And, and then this is just a shout-out to Southeast. At least you used to, I assume you still do, have more kids who sign up for the gap program than any of our other schools. So, that speaks to the fact that that area is, is very interested in this kind of, of program. Because I remember one year, I think you had 12 kids, which was, you know, more than any other school in our system. So, you already have your pump primed. So, just wanted to make you, you know, give you kudos for that.
Alright, no more questions. Thank you very much for the presentation. We are now at action items, and I will turn this over to Diane Bellamy-Smalls.
Good evening. Tonight, we are considering three policy items that were reviewed by the Policy Committee and were published for public comment in September. One comment was received and it is attached to item 9A? I think that's what that is, okay. Members of the public who would like to view the policy revisions may do so on the, on tonight's board meeting agenda, which can be accessed at www.gcsnc.com under Board Education. So, I move that, this is action item A. I move for the adoption of the new policy 7430, substitutes as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Alright. Chrissy?
I know that we got the one public comment about this, and I did want to ask, the current policy, as it's written now, being brought forward, is saying that parents shall be notified if there is a unqualified substitute in the classroom for four or more weeks. And the public comment was about the amount of time, saying that they felt like that was an excessive amount of time to wait before notifying a family. And I do agree with that. That's, you know, almost a half of a grading period. And so, I wanted to see what kind of discussion there had been and if there were any thoughts around that.
That's Dr. Oakley.
I'm not aware of any discussion specific to that in terms of substitutes and the wait period. Rebecca, did you have any?
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
This policy, we didn't have, we don't currently have a policy about substitutes. So, we drafted this policy to align the board's policy with the legal requirements. And it is a federal requirement that, that month period for notifying families if there is not a highly qualified teacher in the classroom is in the federal requirements. It doesn't prohibit us from notifying sooner, but that is the legal requirement.
Thank you. Can I make a substitute motion then?
Mm-hmm.
I would like to move that we change the language in item C on this from four or more consecutive weeks to two or more consecutive weeks to allow for parents to receive more notification if there's not a qualified teacher in their classroom.
Is there a second? Diane?
I'm not seconding it, but I have a question.
If somebody can second it, we can get to the question.
I'll second, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, Diane.
Finding subs, particularly in specific areas, is very, very difficult. Okay, so, would our staff not need more time? I guess this is, falls on the principal at the school to try to search, to find a, if you will, qualified individual? Or is that the responsibility of HR?
I mean, it's, it's everybody, but it depends on if it doesn't get picked up and the school asks for support. I would ask if we could say where feasible, when possible, something. Because sometimes, you know, a family, there's a death in a family and, and this long-term sub might be highly qualified. You know what I mean? Or the one for the first week isn't, but then we're able to find a retired person who is. Because sometime, you know what I mean? And so, I wonder if a friendly amendment that allows for us to notify as soon as we know, because there might be chance, there might be circumstances that make the two weeks difficult. But I think when feasible, we could act, totally do it. And sometimes, the longer term it is, we don't know that it's going to be long-term until the doctor visit and then there's a note on Friday that they need to be out the following week. And sometimes the longer we have, the more qualified person we're able to find. So, there's just a lot of moving parts. So, I don't know if we could do when feasible. That might be helpful at the school level because it's not always the same person.
Okay, may I ask another question then? We give leave, like maternity leave, paternity leave, right? And how many weeks is that normally?
It's up to 12, but it's based on what leave they've earned. Not everyone gets the automatic 12.
Okay, my, my point of that is that then if we notify parents, say you've got a person who's on maternity or paternity leave, which means that they're, say, and say they're, they're qualified to get all 12 weeks. Doesn't mean necessarily they're not coming back. But it just means that, you know, trying to find a, another math person is only going to be there for eight weeks because this person is coming back. I mean, I, I just think that, that two weeks is a bit short to, you know, have them because we have certain, and whether it's family leave, paternity leave, maternity leave, we have some leaves that allow for longer periods of time, so.
I, I agree absolutely with what you're saying. And I, I think the concern isn't necessarily saying that, oh, we need to replace a sub if there's not somebody highly qualified, just simply to make sure that we're notifying parents that, hey, it's been more than two weeks. We have somebody in your room who's teaching, who doesn't necessarily meet the teaching qualifications. It's, it's really, to me, it's more about the transparency and keeping parents informed as to what's going on in their child's classroom.
Well, would you be, I mean, a friendly amendment to your substitute could be two to four weeks as opposed to?
I would be happy with that compromise.
Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, I just want Dr. Oakley to go over what happens when a substitute is in the classroom for a long period of time? Because I understand that they can't put in grades or something is a fine line of what they can, what the impact is to a student's grade and that individual being a substitute instruction.
So, it depends on if it's a teacher of record. At the school level, the principal has the ultimate grading authority. So, often, it's the math team that works together to make sure if it's an entire grading period or if there's a, a final exam, given that those grades are entered. But you're right, and now we have new infinite campus that's got its own sets of positives and we're still working on it. And so, I mean, ultimately, the teacher of record is who's allowed to enter grades. But at the school level, the principal has the ultimate grading authority. So, often, it's a team of teachers making a recommendation based on the class roster if we're dealing with a long-term sub situation. But, I mean, it's, it's very dependent on the situation, yeah.
Right, I totally understand. I just don't want us to not, to count out individuals who may not be so-called certified, but they are a one great-
Oh, sure.
They have the content and they're able to connect with our students. And just because I'm not so-called certified, I might be the greatest teacher on, on the planet, you know, in that regard. So, I just worry about what we're saying about someone and to a parent because that's still no excuse, right? We've had certified teachers, we know what happened at Western with the science and da-da-da-da-da. Person was certified, but then something happened. And so, then we can't, you know what I'm saying? So, I just worry about that part.
Thank you Linda.
Alright, if, if we know that the, you know, I think most teachers, if they know they're going to go out, they generally are looking, they will try to, you know, if they know someone or they have a standard sub, I think they will try to engage with people to, because they're proud of their class and they want their class taken care of. So, I think they do a lot of looking to try and line that up themselves. Now, it doesn't always happen, but I do think they make an effort. The other thing is that a substitute does not do lesson plans. That is up to the team to provide those lesson plans, correct?
And again, course-dependent, team-dependent, grade-share-dependent. We do, I mean, we are in a little bit better place now because we post lesson plans on Canvas. And so, there's, it's a little bit easier now to access a, a plan that's in place ahead of time remotely.
But they-
But they're not typically creating content on their own before they go in and deliver it the following day.
Right, so what I'm saying is they have, there should be content available to them that they should be presenting. They would have an opportunity to review that, I would hope, like the night before or especially on a long term. So that, you know, and as long as they have some aptitude to do it, hopefully that, that will work. And, because hard, the hard part to me would- And, because the hard part to me would be creating the content that has to be presented. So if they can assess what the content is, have some basic knowledge, if it's math or some basic knowledge, you don't want to put me in an English class, but you can put me in a math class. I can do math. So, you know, the sub situation is a challenging situation, and I think that we always try to do the best we can. And that is a shout-out to all the people that are very astute to education, math, English, if you have it, talent. This is our encouragement for you to come join us and join our substitute, because the higher the talent we have in our substitutes, the better off we are, because we are going to have to have long-term subs occasionally. So if you have skills and you have time, please consider to join us, and we will support you in every way we can. Thank you.
I want to move the item.
Well, I want, first, we need to get, she hasn't accept.
I just would like for her to say what the substitute motion is with the friendly amendment for everyone.
So the substitute motion would be to accept the rest of the policy, except to revise in Part C, where it says for four or more consecutive weeks, to make it two to four consecutive weeks.
Second.
All right. Diane?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I need clarification on that. I don't understand what that means. Does that mean from two to four? What does two to four mean? It seems like it would be triggered at two weeks.
Well, as I understood it, since, you know, was that then that allows them that they could do it at two, but they have up to four weeks to do it? So that they're not just, you know, hammered at two weeks? Because, again, whenever you've got leave, like where somebody you know is going to be on extended leave, no real point telling them at two weeks, you could, you know, wait to four, because you know that they're coming back, because they're on paternity leave or whatever. So that was what.
As long as staff understands what that means, does that mean, so that really means that they have to do it by four weeks, doesn't that?
Uh-huh. You could say no later than four weeks then, or up to four weeks, and so that that way it's not.
I just want to make sure that if you're going to give a directive to staff to understand what it means.
Yeah. But it's more than one week.
I think it's encouraging them if it's going to be, maybe I think what they're thinking, if you say four, then they won't do it until four. If you say two to four, then that may encourage them if they think it's appropriate to do it at two. That would be my thing.
I'm thinking that this is about parent notification, right? So we're asking parents to be notified sooner than later. I believe that's what my colleague was asking, not after four weeks, I've had a sub, and now you're telling me? So we're saying, two weeks after they've been there, if that person is still there, you've got to start notifying the parents. One week, they're good.
Okay, so you guys just said three different things. That's exactly why I raised the point. One of you said that means two weeks, one of you said that means anywhere between two and four, and one said it means no later than four. So I think you guys just need to make sure the staff knows what it means, so that they do what you say.
Would it be fair to say as soon as deemed appropriate and no later than four weeks?
Appropriate to what, though?
To the wisdom of the teacher.
That's kind of abstract, yeah.
Just put yourself in the position of whoever's going to have to interpret this, and they need to know what it means.
Well, it's just open to interpretation, which I think is the jam, because it's like, well, I can do it at two, I can also wait to four, and so if somebody's notified at four weeks, it's like you knew this two weeks ago. So, I mean, anything's going to open up, you know, any kind of critique, because it just is.
What's in that parent's rights, Bill? Nothing related to this.
Madam Chair, I don't, she's probably going to kill me, but could we ask our HR person to weigh in on this?
Shirley said no.
I think what's hard is that it changes every day. So who's in there tomorrow might not be who's the same that's in there today, even if that's the plan.
But you wouldn't have to notify them, right? Because it hasn't been two weeks.
Right. Right. So it could possibly say beyond two weeks and up to four. But again, there may be multiple notifications, because the next person might be a certified person. So I've just, it's a slippery thing, and we may have to touch a communication more than one time, is all I would say. But I don't know what the right word to word it is. And I do wonder, since it's already gone out for common, if it doesn't need to go back to committee.
I also want, I mean, I assume you know who's going to be keeping up with this, but you think about a comprehensive high school.
Yeah, and if it's inconsistent in the sense where one school might notify it two weeks, and somebody else is like, well, somebody else was notified earlier than me, and, you know, and people might not appreciate that, so it's been out.
I just think if you have a clear date, a clear known date, you've got a better chance it's going to happen, and everybody will understand what the rule is. But if you have sort of an ambiguous situation, I think you're going to have inconsistent results.
Madam Chair, can I recommend as Chair of the Policy Committee that we take another look at this? Or do you want to?
Yeah, I think, I think that's within, I think that we can do that. It's been out and taking it back in now that this has been brought up. So to take it back to committee and have some more discussion about it, and then get maybe some input or feedback from.
Well, I think Dr. Kay is an expert on wordsmithing, so that we wind up with something. I know, I just put you on the spot, but oh, well.
Well, I think, I do think the consistency is important.
Is that a substitute to the substitute motion?
I believe it is.
We didn't vote.
That's a recommendation, okay?
So if we can cancel all the motions.
Well, let's not cancel. Why doesn't somebody just make a substitute motion that'd be referred back to committee, and then you've got a nice, clean path?
I'll make a motion to take this item back to committee.
A second.
For further review.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I didn't do that by person.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Item B.
You ready to go? Okay, item B, I make a motion to adopt the revisions to Policy seven, four, four, zero, employee assignments and transfers as presented.
Is there a second? Thank you. Betty, you have a question, or you were just going to second it?
No question.
Okay.
I asked in the board, me, I'm sorry, in the policy meeting, to change the first sentence where it said promptly notified, to put a timeframe there, and I see that it's still worded the same.
It didn't have the votes and the policy committee to change the wording.
Thank you.
All right, so Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Betty?
No.
Pastor?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Kim?
No.
David?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Yes. Oh. And Deanna, yes, so that passes by a vote of seven to two.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to repeal Policy seven, four, four, one, transfers classified as presented.
Second. All right. Diane?
Okay. Yeah, and just clarification, I think this, the one we just voted on, this is, you know, replacing that, okay? Yes.
Thank you. Chrissy?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes, that passes unanimously. Item D, appointment of voting delegates to the North Carolina School Boards Association for the 2025 Delegate Assembly.
Madam Chair, I volunteer.
Okay, that's one. We need four? What's the date on that? November? November 12th? I think Board Member Coats has also volunteered for that.
Is that right? Mr. Coats?
Yes.
If not, we nominate you when you're physically absent.
Would love to be on that.
Okay, Deb, Betty, David, Diane?
Kim.
Kim. All right, we've got our four. All those in favor? Pastor Sheraus, and I will be a backup.
But I do think that just because you're not a delegate, you should have the same opportunity to attend that conference, because you're a school board member. Okay, so I hope people will be encouraged to attend.
All right, so let's vote on that. Diane?
Yeah, well, I just, okay, I'll vote and then tell you.
Okay. Chrissy?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Pastor Sheraus?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes, that passes unanimously.
Okay, just so that folks, we're accustomed to this being that Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and this year, it's Wednesday, Thursday, I think, Friday, because they couldn't get the Cory Center there. So people will be expecting that it would be the normal days. This is why, okay?
All right, we're now at the resolution on Laughlin. Pastor Sheraus?
Yes, I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Guilford County Board of Education, here and after the board owns certain real property located at seven, nine, one, one, Summerfield Road, Summerfield, North Carolina, currently known as Laughlin Education Center, here and after, quote, "the real property." And whereas the real property is no longer necessary or desirable for public school purposes, thus it constitutes surplus property as defined by NCGS one, fifteen, C, dash, five, eighteen, A. And the board declared its surplus on October 11th, 2022, and reaffirms that declaration. And whereas the real property should be disposed of in accordance with law so as to maximize asset use for the Guilford County Public Schools, and the board and the Guilford County Board of Commissioners, here and after the commissioners, have entered into an inter-local agreement to use the proceeds from the sale of Laughlin Education Center to offset the cost of purchasing the Green Valley Central Office facility. And whereas the real property was originally offered to the commissioners for purchase for fair market value in 2022, and the board again offers it to the commissioners in accordance with state law. And whereas the town of Summerfield, here and after the town, has renewed its previous offer to purchase the real property, as is for the purchase price of $2,200,000, which offer was accepted by the Board of Education in 2022, and the board again formally accepts the offer and renews its intent to sell the property to the town contingent on the commissioners' decision not to purchase the property and other provisions required by law. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the board that the aforementioned real property, which is described with particularity in the attachment here to, shall be and it hereby is declared to be surplus property, and that this real property shall be disposed of in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160A, Article 12. After first offering this property to the Guilford County Board of Commissioners for purchase at its fair market value in contingent on the response of the commissioners, the Board of Education again accepts the offer of the town of Summerfield to purchase the real property as is for the price of $2,200,000, and hereby authorizes staff to dispose of the real property by the means permitted by law, in the event that the county commissioners opt not to purchase the property for fair market value, approved and adopted on the 14th day of October, 2025.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept that resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes, that passes unanimously.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Since the name Laughlin, I think, has some historical significance, can we kind of put it in the name bank in case there might be an opportunity to use that name again?
I guess if you remember that.
Okay, I'm just asking.
No, I hear you. We have it in the, we have it in the minutes. And so, yeah, I think, I think it's important, too. I think history's really important, you know, context's really important, thank you. All right, we're now, Board Member Comments, and I'll just start with you, Board Member Bellamy Small.
Okay. Madam Superintendent, I didn't, you may have mentioned this, but, and I don't know the right name for it, but it's the College Sign-Up Week? Did you, did you mention that? Okay, I just want to make sure that folks don't let that pass when there is opportunity, even if you're not sure whether you're going, because you can at least apply for free, go ahead and do that during that opportunity, as opposed to waiting and, you know, having to pay for it later on, so just want to. Yes, yeah, but I just want to make sure. Okay, and then, I think we're at the end of Fire Prevention Week, but it's important for us to all remind even ourselves that if you don't have a plan, you might wind up being a crispy critter. So making sure that you think about fire prevention and what you can do, and call your local fire departments, they will tell you. They'll even come out and do an assessment for you if you need for them to. I really wish I'd seen more public programs in the Crescent area, which I didn't see, and I think that that's important, since we do know that we have an area of Greensboro that is more prone to fires than, you know, some other areas of Greensboro. The downtown, I have a little gift for y'all, you can pass them down. The Downtown Greenway is almost finished. We've been working on that thing since 2008. We were supposed to finish it in 2018, but we didn't. So start looking for the projected date of completion with celebration and all that now is projected for May of 2026. And they plan to have a whole month of celebrations and that type of thing. And so we want to encourage, I've asked them to talk to us about having a walk day that our schools might look at, you know, just bringing their kids, because that's four miles, and I want them to walk it. I can't walk it, but, you know, it's a beautiful, particularly with the amount of public art. You have public, a significant public art piece in all four corners of the city, and so north, south, east, and west, but then you have other pieces of public art. If you remember when you were driving on the bridge coming to Eugene Street, the underpass is a part of the public art that the Downtown Greenway is responsible for. So I want to really thank all of us who have been on that committee for the last, well, since 2008, whatever that is, that many years. And I'm very pleased that we're getting towards the end of that. My last request is that people remember that early voting starts on Thursday. We only had 10% of, which was actually better than usual, of people participated in the, in the primary. But it's, it's important for us to understand that all politics is local, and it's our local public officials, whether it's this board, county commissioners, or city council, we're the ones that are on the ground, trying to make decisions that, of whatever is pitched at us from the federal and state level. So remember that it's important that you have your voice heard during this, and the general election's on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Chrissy?
I don't really have much to say tonight, I don't think, except just to thank Dr. Oakley and her staff for just always being very responsive to the questions that this board has. And I know the public doesn't see it, but we all have the opportunity individually the week before the board meeting to sit down with Dr. Oakley, any members of her staff that we want to talk with, and go through the agenda, and ask a bunch of questions, and get everything answered before we come sit in this room. And I just, I really appreciate the openness of the staff to be willing to do that, and even to make changes in how things are reported, based on some of those conversations. So it's just helpful to know that everybody's listening and trying to work together to really have as much transparency as possible into what we do here. So thank you very much, and that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you. And I'll add to that, they are only a phone call away, and they are used to getting my phone calls, and I will say they answer back promptly. Thank you to City Help of the Triad. They'll be awarding eight additional scholarships for former Guilford County School students, and these are student, male students who graduated this past June. BPA had a picnic and play on the 18th, and it was a great turnout. We had lots of parents and community members there, eating outside, watching the kids play, and they also formed a strong PTA at that time, so things are moving in the right direction. Seniors, I plead to you, please, 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 get your applications in as soon as possible, get your letters for your scholarships and for your admission to college. Bear in mind, it's going to take a little while sometime to get letters from different departments, so start working on that right now. You should have been working on that last week or two weeks ago, so I'm asking you to please, 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 take care of that as soon as possible, because you do not want to waste your mama and your daddy's money, because you want to get scholarships so they can keep their money in their pocket. As far as safety concerned, I am very vigilant as far as safety for all. That means staff, teachers, parents, community, and students. So if you see something- teachers, parents, community, and students. So if you see something, say something, and I will talk more about that later. Breast cancer awareness month is this month, and I would like to say thank you for all who recovered from breast cancer, and praying for the ones who have breast cancer now. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Pastor Sheraus?
Not so much to say tonight. I always appreciate the public comment portion of this meeting. There's a whole meeting that occurs after that, and you're always welcome to stay for that as well. Tonight, I was thankful particularly for the comments from April Parker and Landon Carson, who offered solidarity and support for the LGBTQ community. Saturday was National Coming Out Day, and I thank you both for coming out to the board. I'm not sure there is anything that we do as a district that is more important than ensuring a safe and affirming space for all of our students, and especially those who are marginalized and vulnerable, which certainly includes prominently our LGBTQ students. We see efforts on a large scale beyond us, the state and national level legislatively, that target lesbian, gay, and bisexual students, and increasingly target trans students. Such legislation has never done a thing to impact a student's sexuality or gender identity, but it has made our LGBTQ students feel less seen, less understood, and more vulnerable to harm from others and even from themselves. And we heard about that tonight very powerfully. So I want to say thank you for the courage and grace in holding us to this commitment, in reminding us it is our duty not to, not to over comply with bad legislation. I thank you for your trust and believing that we can be that safe and affirming space. And I'd like to say to Landon that I'm sorry that we did not provide that for you as a student, but I'm so glad that we know you now in the fullness of who you are. Thanks.
Thank you. Linda?
I know the celebration of excellence was almost a month ago now, but it showcased the talent and dedication of all our staff, our, from our administrators to our teachers to our classified. And you keep stepping up for us every day for the students of Guilford County, and I really appreciate that. Our other issue is our budget. Please call your elected officials at the state level and tell them that this is getting a little bit ridiculous about this extenuation, and to get their ducks in row and communicate, and let's try to get a budget out of there, because it's, we need a budget so that we can move forward. So have a great evening, have a great rest of the week, and that's good for me.
Kim?
Yes. I want to talk a little bit about the federal voucher program that is, could be in effect in our state. And for those of you that may not know, is that that program creates a one-to-one individual tax credit up to $1,700 for students. This means if an individual contributes $1,700 to an SGO, which is a scholarship granting organization, the federal government will credit that individual the full amount of $1,700 when they file their federal taxes. The voucher program is not free money. This is your tax dollars, and it does take away from other public services, not just education. Every public good is being impacted by the federal voucher program. Even in our state approving a voucher program, it impacts across the board all of your services, not just education. And I know that our governor did veto, and it's coming up again on Monday for a vote to accept this federal program. So not only will your state tax dollars be locked into federal programs for private schools, but now your federal dollars are going to be locked in again for another opportunity to not be used for all of the rest of the public good. So I hope that we are paying attention to this, these programs, and how our federal dollars are being used. Students are eligible for the federal vouchers along with residing in the state. The family income is not greater than 300%. So 90% of families, including those with incomes over $500,000, in some places, could be eligible for your tax dollars to pay for their child not to go to the public schools, which are not free either. Public schools are not free. Your tax dollars also are supporting public good. We heard someone come to the mic and talk about school safety. Public dollars are the reason why we can provide school safety. If we don't get the dollars to do that, then it, then it doesn't happen the way that we want it to happen. So please, please, advocate for our public dollars to stay in public good and not to be privatized. All of the children in Guilford County cannot attend a private school. And I want to big up Greensboro Day School, because they do not accept voucher programs in Guilford County. Thank you.
Thank you. David want to say anything? I know he's in Istanbul, and it's like 1:00 AM.
I can't hear you.
David, it's your turn. You can go ahead.
Okay, well, I want to just say that I thought the presentation regarding the Guilford Guarantee was tremendous. We learned about the background. We learned about how it's going to be implemented, and just really where the rubber hits the road. I agree with what Ms. Erby said earlier regarding the need to keep up with the technology, keep up with the changes in industry, and have the conversation continue. And I want to thank the board for naming me as delegate to the assembly that school boards puts together. I attended the school board convention last year. I found it very informative, lots of good programs, lots of ability to talk to board members across the state, learn about some of their strategies, some of their successes, how they approach things. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being with us from afar. Deborah Knapper on as well?
I think she's... Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you, everybody, for the wonderful presentations this evening. And thank you, Kim, for that update on the legislative action. I think that's really important to call attention to that vote. Diane, I'll keep the Laughlin name in my cap for the facilities naming committee and see what we can do for that in the future. I would like to ask for the parents' assistance with some of these security things. It has been a perennial problem for fights in our schools to show up on avenues like TikTok and Instagram and video pages. And unfortunately, we have no control over what our students can post, and no control over how long it stays or when it is taken down. The best that we can do is report it when it comes up, and ask that anybody who finds those pages or finds those videos reports them also. The more reports they get, the faster they get them, the faster those videos come off of those social media pages. And that is the best action that we know to take, to keep those videos from being posted and to get them down as quickly as we possibly can. And, yeah, I would just kind of like to echo what Pastor Sheraus said, that we need to support all of our students. And I'm trying, trying to find, like, I have a difficulty putting words on this, but just validate that everyone has a right in this country to live their life, their life, in the way they best see fit. And none of us have the right to take that away from each other. And the best we can do is love each other as we love ourself, as the Bible commanded us, and pass that love along. And I wish everyone a lovely evening.
Thank you. And I just have a few things. Diane, I have to look at the Greenway. I ride my bike on the Greenway from, like, Morrow and Gate City to Fisher Park to Smith Street, and then background is Green Garden, and then Gates, and then South Elm. So I'm not sure where, it's a little broken up, I think, isn't it? But anyway, I have to go and look at it, but I certainly, well, I was a little concerned about going past Bingham Park, because I know that was on, that's part of the ground, Greenway Plan 2, was to go past that.
No, no, it doesn't go that far.
Okay.
It's, it's, it comes down...
It might be the future plans for it.
Uh, Bragg Street, and then comes across down to Morrow Boulevard.
Yeah.
So it doesn't come that far.
I read all that, yeah. I thought I read that maybe the future plan was for, to go by there.
We're going to be done.
Yeah, okay.
For our part.
I've gone to a lot of the candidate forums, hosted a couple of them. Another one tomorrow at the International Civil Rights Center Museum. I was really glad that a lot of the candidates are talking about housing and education, because the decisions that they're, they make about housing really do impact our schools. And I, too, appreciate our speakers always. I want to say a little bit about school safety. This board, I think, has been so aligned with our school safety office. And, you know, there are things that are just not acceptable to us, and I think we have been so consistent in that, supporting our school safety office. Our job is to make sure that, that school safety is fair and unbiased and equitable, but we have just been, just have not seen. So if any of that sort of old narrative that, you know, we're telling people, don't discipline students, or, you know, don't, don't hold students responsible or accountable, just hasn't been a culture, or certainly not something that I've had conversations with, with, with our staff about. School safety is a nuanced, complex thing because of so many factors, but I just wanted to say that I think we have been really aligned and consistent with supporting our students and wanting them to be safe, and wanting to make sure that our policies and practices are just. And the last thing, as one of the speakers talked about breast cancer disparities and the impact that that has, and that those disparities are so consistent with our achievement gap. I mean, if you just lined all of those inequities up, I was appointed to the Guilford County Infant and Maternal Health Task Force, and we had a meeting today. And I told Dr. Oakley, I said, all you have to do is just take out maternal and infant health and put education, and we would be talking about some of the same things. And these aren't just behavioral factors. It's not genetics that I'm talking about, or it's not access-related factors. It is the way you are treated differently by our healthcare systems, whether or not your lump gets biopsied or is told to keep your eye on it and come back in three months. And if you're a population who is susceptible to a very aggressive, fast-acting type of breast cancer, three months can be fatal. And so this Breast Cancer Month is here. That awareness, I think, is, is really important. And I always could affirm what Pastor Sheraus says after his public comments. So I'll do so again tonight about making sure that our kids are respected and safe. And with that said, I'll...
Move to adjourn.
To adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Aye? Any opposed? All right. Have a good evening. Thank you, staff, and visitors, and attendees, and parents.